Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bellefonte Borough Council Work Session. No council action is taken during the work sessions. I do have a trivia question for tonight. Where in Bellefonte is Strick Nine Corner located? Oh, we've got audience participation, please.
...
Yes, it is. Do you know why it was called that?
Yeah. What a drug deal.
Well, it was originally, it said it was the number of bars and saloons in that area.
And prostitutes.
I'm sorry?
And prostitutes.
Oh, it didn't say that. Even better. Great, thank you. Thank you very much. First, we will hear from, an update from our band show group.
Okay. Up there?
Please.
Well, thanks for having us. What I'm going to review is stuff that we've talked to Deb and Barb and Doug about as we formed that small committee of a few people from our group and a few people from council to try and move forward. But I thought I'd also tell you about, I mean, our plan is still the same. We would like to build a band shell in Tallyrand Park that would provide more space for performing arts and better facility, that the sound will project out as opposed to everywhere. You don't want it to go from the gazebo. It would be bigger than the gazebo. It would be enough space to have the Bellefonte Community Band or the Nitty Valley Symphony and still fit on a footprint that fits into that corner of the park that we've been talking about. Those of you who have been through the park, we still have that sign up in the corner in front of the Pelican Building. And right now, we have gone back to getting three different options. Option one, that's the one that we put on our brochure. There's a picture of it. Ralph, can you advance the slide? That's the front and that's the side view and the back. This is when we had a meeting over a year ago, a year and a half ago. Joe Beagle called it the Taj Mahal and said that we were trying to build something that was ridiculous. We didn't think so. We thought it was quite attractive and a nice entry to the town. And we were, we are convinced we could fund a project like that. But since then, it sounds like there are other plans for the Pelican Building and we've moved to two other options. And if we advance the slide one more time. This footprint looks a little bigger than it actually is, but basically, the front of the stage facing the park would still allow for the kind of entertainment that we would like to put on the stage. It has far less surrounding it. It's quite a bit less expensive. We did include the chimneys that represent the iron furnaces. And next slide, Ralph? And then that's what it would look like from the side at the bottom and again, the front view without all the pavilions that would fill up that part of the park. And then we have our really down scaled version, the next one, Ralph? And it's just a plain stage. And we already have enough money to build that. So we could do this stage. We just don't think it's what we would like to see as the entrance to the town. It's basically the same thing without the furnaces. Next slide, Ralph? The back just isn't, nope. Yeah, the back just isn't very attractive and we still have the blue Pelican Building sitting there. So we've taken the feedback and said, okay, we can, we can work out different opportunities, different kinds of options for this. And our architect's more than happy to draw a third, a fourth, a fifth plan if we want. Unfortunately, it costs money, so we stopped at three. Let me tell you what we've done, not tell the full council what we've done so far. We've written four grants to get money. One of the grants to the DCED was funded to the tune of a million dollars. That's been sitting in the Borough Treasury for, since May, I think, May of last year. Many of us were there at the celebration when we got the check from DCED. We also wrote a grant to Happy Valley Adventure Bureau. They gave us $10,000 to promote the stage. We wrote another grant to the Arts Council for $20,000, which we didn't get funded. And we have a fourth grant that is pending. And this is with the local share, it's called, and it's money that the state takes in from gaming. And for those of you who aren't familiar with it, that gaming money, rounding error, about $150 million, that's distributed to counties. It's done by county. And Center County's never applied for that money. So we wrote a grant and the Center County Commissioners endorsed the grant and we asked for another million dollars. That grant is pending. We don't know what's going to happen with it. We might get a million dollars, we might get nothing, we might get something in between. The Commissioners also submitted a couple of other proposals with that. But the fact that Center County's never gotten any money from this, from this fund, we think we have a good shot at getting something, whether it's our project or another project within Center County. So we're waiting to hear on that. We also have, I would say conservatively, about a quarter of a million dollars in incoming funds that people are waiting to hear, what are you doing? And we said, we don't know what we're doing yet because we've been on hold for about 14 months, trying to figure out, first, do we have the Pelican Building or not? Second, which of these proposals, if any, would be the funding? So we're trying to get to a point where our group and the Borough Council can agree on a path forward. And that's really why we're here, is to just say, we would like to move forward. We have the wherewithal to do it. We have a great committee, lots of expertise on the committee. And, you know, I'm just trying to figure out, how do we get to yes, so we can go out and solicit more funds and we can get the building built? So that's where we are. And that clear path forward is what we really need because we can't, we can't just keep doing, you know, telling our donors, we don't know yet. It's embarrassing. And we do have the money from the state, from DCED until December 31st of next year. So we have to get going because it's going to take a while to get the approval, all the permits needed and the building built. Anything else we want to add to it? I'm happy to answer questions. Members of our committee are here. I know there's some questions, some of the Borough Council members may have heard, that some people don't like this idea in the community. We did a lot of work early on and we talked to over 100 different people representing different organizations and we didn't get that pushback. And people stepped up with their checkbooks. I mean, we've got, we've got the grant money, we have about $75,000 that have been contributed in private funds. And as I said, we probably, once we can announce that we're going forward, another quarter of a million dollars, we think would roll in right away. Happy to answer any questions.
When we gave you a list of, of the checkoff, how have you, where are we at?
Well, okay, so we have a couple of the things done. We met with PennDOT. They gave us the approval since we're not changing the entrance to the driveway, so...
So, I know what Ralph was saying, but did they give you a written letter? Do you have a letter?
We have, we have a document. They sent us an email and we've shared that, I believe. Ralph, did we send that to you? Yeah. Yeah, so we have that written approval. Doug, I have to say, that list made little sense because we don't even know what the building's going to look like. So how do we get a tax notice? How do you tax something that doesn't exist? How do you get approvals from agencies? So I guess when I saw that list, I saw it as simply a roadblock and say, you know, you guys have to clear this hurdle. And we can't clear some of those hurdles. And if we're going to do this cooperatively, we're going to work with you to make sure we do have all those things checked off. It's not that we're opposed to them. It's about half of them at least couldn't be done at this point because we don't even know if we're going to build, where we're going to build, or what we're going to build.
While all the council agrees with you, for the best of my knowledge, it's a change.
Well, you're not going to get it before we have an idea of what we're going to build because you can't get, you can't get approval for things. Yeah.
I think there is, I remember, um, there was a, we took conversations about, on your opportunity, and in that process, we have no idea that the port were, well, in the model. So, right now, if you can, let me talk here, he was talking to me.
Yeah, I saw it.
Yes.
So we know where perhaps with DEP and how we're moving along, it's a slow process. And we cannot, we're going, we're here for the week, and we're, we have to be careful. So, right now, we can't, we don't want to call.
Sorry.
Can we repeat everything you said?
So, I think the earliest they can start is, help me out, Ralph, if I'm not accurate with this. I don't have that document in front of me right this minute. I think it's in November for the...
Probably. They were going to try to fast track it, but it'd take them about two months to do the work. And of course, tonight, we're asking permission. The authority is asking council for permission.
Right.
On tonight's agenda.
So, and the earliest they would be punching holes in the ground would be a year from now. So I think the authority, and I don't know about council, but in my opinion, getting the spring uncovered at this time is more important than the band show. And I can't tell you where those wells will be located or even if it will happen. We're taking it one step at a time to get approvals, to see if it works. There's a lot of things we have, hurdles we have to climb, but we have to do it one step at a time. And we can't move DEP any faster than what we're moving them now.
I think it's interesting that this has come up now. The Big Spring was covered in 1999. It's been covered for 25 years.
We've been trying to uncover the spring for years and we've went through many different renditions of how we can do it and how we can afford it. Luckily, we have some money now, a small amount of money, that if this goes through and what is estimated to be today, we can afford to do it.
Well, we've had our, we've had people look at that and say, probably not.
Well...
That's, I mean, these are opinions.
That's all hearsay.
I get it. But now, what I'm hearing is, we should put off our plan until you get an answer, which is...
You betcha. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, then...
And if council doesn't agree, that's fine.
That gives us, that gives us our answer because we can't just keep doing this. You've worked on something for...
It's not my decision, Rick. It's this council's decision.
Well, and the council can decide what they want to do. I mean, I'm not on council, but it just seems that 25 years of being covered up, all of a sudden, now we're going to uncover it again. I know you've been trying before, but it's 25 years of no success either.
I was not on council or the authority for 25 years.
I would just add, Rick, we changed engineers for the Water Authority, you know, a year, year and a half ago. That's really the, I mean, they came in with an idea. They had several ideas, but this one rose to the top. That's, we did not have this idea, you know, more than a year or two ago. So that's what happened on our end with the authority. You know, they had been looking, as Doug said, from day one, how to beautify the Big Spring. So this is probably the, and there's many steps in this process that may make the project not feasible. Even, you know, after 60 days, we might know it's not going anywhere, but we don't know that today.
Thanks. Well, on December 9th of 2021, the Borough Council and our group and DBI signed an agreement that we would, we should move forward. And we did.
And at that time, we didn't have a plan to uncover the spring.
Correct, correct. But the fact of the matter is, we moved ahead with our plan based on that agreement. We have another document from March of 2023 that gives the council support for what we're doing. We've done these things. We're doing what you've asked us to do and now we're asked to wait to a point where we can't do the project. So that's, that's where we are right now.
Council, have any comments? Which one do you want? A Tallyrand stage or do you...
Talking about reading the board. Well, I think the mic, um...
Can you hear me, Tom? Okay. I think at some point, you need to look at the residents of Bellefonte and what they might like, you know, once you have pictures and things and start to, start to move, move those people around to come in and look at this stuff. Not, you know, can't, maybe can't get everybody at one time, but maybe a couple of days in a week. We've done, we've done this before when we made changes. And I think that, I think the Borough residents deserve to have a say in what's going on with it. As far as the determination with the wells, I don't know. I don't know anything about it. I heard about it, but I don't know what this, what the process is going to be, if it's just drilling for where water is or what's going on. So they could poke around there for who knows how long, but I still think that shouldn't hold you guys up to have at least, you know, get it to a point where we're setting with a, with a program that's going to work for the residents and other people that's going to be maybe visiting the town.
Well, we did, we did solicit input when we started this process. And I don't know who is the one, who are the people that don't like the project, but they haven't come forward to us. Basically, when we started and we started talking to people, with the exception of one or two people who said that they didn't think it was a good idea, a majority of the people said it was a good idea. They thought it was a good thing. So we have, we have that.
I think it's a very good idea, but I cannot tell you where to locate it in the park at this moment until I know where the, if they're going to put holes in the ground to draw water. If I knew that, if it was somewhere that didn't interrupt your stage where you want to locate it, I'm for it.
But we won't know that for potentially months or a year.
That, Rick, that's my opinion. You can pull the town and see which one they want. Do they want the spring uncovered possibly, or do they want the stage located there within the year? That's just my opinion.
I also think the stage is an excellent idea, but it has been so important to get that spring uncovered. And I know that's been worked, been worked on way before I was on council. So I'm hoping that we can work together on this to make this work. I understand, I get it, Doug, I really do, and I understand it and I think that's very important. And this could be a quick answer, yes or no, once, once they do the testing. Is that correct?
That's step two.
Okay.
And probably a eight to 10 step process.
Right, right.
And we have to get the approval from council to do the test wells, which we hope to do tonight. So they're going to put some small holes in the ground. We're, the authority is moving as quickly as we can and as gently as we can with DEP. And our engineers.
I can't add anything to that. I mean, we have to do what we have to do, so...
If you have influence with DEP and you can cut corners, we'd sure like to know them.
I wouldn't want to do that with our water, so...
It may turn out, Rick, that they do these two test sites wells and, and it fails. So then you're ready to go.
Hi, I'm Tom Bathgate. I'm co-chair with Rick and we can't. I've been doing fundraising as a part of this and the fundraiser, the people that have already given us money want to know what's going on. So we put a deadline of October with your help.
That's right, Tom. Let's, let's back up.
And you still can't...
Rick has been kept up to date since day one of this possibility of uncovering the spring. And we told him...
If we can't go ahead...
That we weren't meeting until...
Please.
Until October.
Doug, please.
And we didn't have any new information.
Please, we cannot wait. It's not a matter of opinion. It's a, it's a matter of fact. We're going to lose our money.
For what? What's the fact?
We can't get the project built by the time the DCED grant is, is...
What do you want me to do, Tom?
No, no, no. You said wait. And that's when I came to the altar, or the altar here, yeah. I came to the microphone. We can't wait. I'm sorry.
It's up to this council. It's not up to me. I am giving you what, the information that I know. It's not up to me.
If, if there's no hope beyond tonight, we're going to have to kill the project or move it. We have some other opportunities for people to, that want to have it open, air site. So that's just, it's a matter of fact. We've been delayed now for over a year.
I don't know what you want me to do.
You, I don't want you to do anything, Doug. You're a good man. Thanks.
Can I ask how big the band show, or, yeah, the band show was anticipated being, like, square footage or...
Tom Bathgate again. Size of the stage is 50 by 40 and it holds the high school bands in the county and the biggest one is Bellefonte Community Band. And that's how it was sized.
Yeah. So chances are, if we do wells, I mean, what are the chances that the well's going to end up in that 50 by 40 foot spot? I mean...
I don't know. I don't know.
Well, no, I'm just saying, though, that seems like a very small area compared to the whole park.
It is. But there's, there's ancillary equipment that goes with the wells and I don't know what that is.
The issue is, there's a, there's a, probably a 400 foot buffer zone that they say is like zone one around a well. We know there's issues with the railroad tracks, you know, where exactly these, first of all, they got to find, they call it a conduit flow underground. So where that is, then they start measuring up to 400 feet for the buffer for the well. And we'll have probably three wells minimum for the amount of water we need to pull out of the ground. So we have no idea where these wells are going to go. And where, there probably will be some variances, you know, we have a highway, we have the old Snappy's Pelican Building, the railroad tracks. They said absolutely no sewer lines, no storm drains. You know, those things will be a red flag, you know? So we have a lot of issues to work around and somebody from DEP is going to come in. This kind of gives us an overview of what we might run into while, at the same time, these like underground tests are going to be done to see where this conduit flow is, the flow that's heading to the Big Spring. Thanks.
Ralph, I've taken a, a rule to the site plan and it could stretch as far as High Street. It's going to take out all of the utilities in Water Street. You're, you're looking at some really big budget bulges, if that's the truth, 400 feet.
We, we have asked repeatedly with these engineers, are we within our budget? The grant, same grant funds that you folks received. At this point, they just said, not more than a week ago, yes, we're still in budget. Now, whether something changes, I don't know, but we've repeatedly asked them. we're still in budget. That's the best I can do.
Well, that's good. That's good. I spent five years doing water systems for municipalities in South Jersey. And I think you're going to be having a tough time with a man and a half, is it?
A little more than that.
A little more than that. Each one of my wells, production wells, was $500,000 with the pumping. Keep that in mind. And they've got three of them.
Tom, my first question at each meeting is, are we still within budget, projected budget?
Mine too.
Just be careful. You may get to a point.
You're absolutely right.
You can't do it.
You're.
And you also lost the stage. Thank you very much for your attention.
Can I ask another question about those wells? Are they going to be above ground, like visible to the public?
There, there'll be a well casing, I'm sure, above ground. Whether they're inside a building, I don't know that part. It'll probably be camouflaged somehow, but.
We haven't, we haven't gotten to that point yet.
Yeah, we have not even gotten.
Well, I just was wondering what.
They're estimating the casing to be about 35 feet at this minute today. They don't know that for sure. Each casing will have to have something around it, and, and it'll be landscaped. And I think they're projecting four wells. Is that?
Yeah, three to four. They aren't sure exactly, but yes.
So.
So how much space does each well take up then? Like, how much of the park do we lose if we do that?
We don't know that exactly.
That's a very good question, Rita. I, I guess I don't understand how this all works, but I hear what you're saying, but we don't even know how much of the park it's going to take up. That makes me question, that makes me question doing this because we don't know what, what that's going to take up, and maybe we can't know that yet.
We don't.
Holly Wilson, and I'm also with the Stage Committee. I have two questions. Number one, would you be able to, according to the meetings that you've got scheduled right now to, for the project with uncovering of the spring? Would you be able to give us a definite answer before the end of the year?
I think that the way that our engineer talked, that this initial group, $53,000 of testing would be done before the end of the year.
So you would be able to tell us?
We would know whether we're at least in the running for the next step. We could, we could be dead by, you know, with this project, after this studies, after these studies are done. Or we could be on to the next step and then see what happens after that. There's, as Doug said, there's multiple steps. Any one could be the end of the deal. So, but they said this initial step, you know, would be about 60 days. And so I would say by the end of the year, we should have some results.
And my last question would be that if indeed this comes through and it says that the project there, whether it's the questions that the council has now kind of raised about the water, like the uncovering and the pumps, my question is, would the council then give us approval to move forward if that is a no?
I can't answer that. That's a question for council.
I'm just putting that out there hypothetically to the council because we would need a definite, without any further roadblocks put in our way. Thank you.
Thanks, Holly. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Deb?
Yeah, Ralph, you had mentioned the, the 400-foot buffer around all of the wellheads?
Yes.
Looking at the, looking at the map, I mean, 400 feet from any point in that circle eight, this is underground or above ground?
This is above ground, 400-foot buffer.
Well, within about 150 feet of any point in the park, there's a whole lot going on. So how is that going to work?
They, they said, they, our engineers said we're absolutely going to have to ask for variances. Because like I said, even like Route 150 is close by.
You've got Water Street, you've got the railroad track, you have the spring, you have the, the outflow from the pump house. You have a good chunk of Tally, the rest of Tallyran Park.
Yes.
If the, if these wells are put in, will that eliminate the use of the park as a public space?
It's not intended to be, no, that, no. The only thing that will be above ground is the wellhead, and that might be in some kind of enclosure. But the piping and everything should be underground. We have piping already in Tallyran Park from the Big Spring that goes through the park.
I'm, I understand about the wellheads. I'm just trying to understand how the stage would actually interfere with those wellheads unless they are somehow placed in that corner of the park.
I, I don't know, other than, you know, the, the buffer zone of 400 feet is what they're saying. Whether it interferes or not, I don't, I can't answer that today. Or just, or I think the Authority was being cautious that you got to have this buffer zone around these wells. It could interfere. They're, they're asking for permission to do the studies to see if there's any, if it is an issue or not. Part of the studies is to see what is out there. A GIS study, piping under the ground. There could be storm drains that, you know, put the end of this. But there, you know, that, that's what we signed up for. The Authority wants to do if they get permission is have these studies done.
We have less than a minute.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Lori, you are on.
Well, good evening and welcome to the next budget round. So I usually start with the street lighting fund, so that's where we're going to start. Just as a refresher, this fund covers the gooseneck lights, the downtown decorative, decorative lights and the EV stations in the train station lot. The gooseneck lights are owned by West Penn Power, but the maintenance on the poles is included in the electricity costs. And the Borough owns the downtown decorative lights, and we pay for all the maintenance and upgrade costs. So for next year, there's a couple of things. We are, we, we talked last year, I don't know if you remember, that we need to undertake some major repair work to the streetlights, the ones that we own, the decorative ones. The, the electric, the conduit and the wiring is old. And the poles, they're looking at it on as, as needed basis, but we do need to go through and start doing some repair or replacement work. So last year, in anticipation of that, we increased the, the tax mileage in this fund a little bit. So for next year, in talking with the Public Works Director, we put in $55,000. We're going to contract the work out. So that would be the, the work, the, and the cost of the conduit, the wiring, any poles and heads that need replaced. The other thing with this is that we, I put in the packet that we have our electric costs were supposed to be set through November of next year, and we got an email saying that is, that's not true. So Ralph sent out an email asking for more information on that. We have not received a reply yet. But I did put in an increase in the electric costs, just in case. So this may have to be revisited once we get a reply. But we will probably need, if, if the electric costs are going to go up, we probably will need like a .05 tax increase in this to get it up to where we can cover the upgrades and the increase in electricity. Do you have any questions on this one? Okay. The next one is the EMS. Again, last year, we did a slight .05 increase. The EMS had asked for up to half a mil, and we had a quarter of a mil. We went to .3. I think in the packet tonight is the letter from the director asking for us to increase it again. I have not increased it in, in what I've presented. If you choose to do that, we can adjust that accordingly. But they turn in their bills to us, and we pay the bills that they ask us to. So we pay bills up to what we levy in taxes. So it's kind of an in and an out. So this one's pretty easy and straightforward. Any questions?
Is there a reason not to get us to, what should it be, like 5.5?
.5, yeah. He's asking for half a mil. I think in his letter, when I read it, he asked for half a mil. We had a quarter of a mil, and then we increased it to .3 last year. So it did not make any changes until, if you guys decide you want to do that, we can do that.
Yeah, I would kind of like to see us, over a period of years, get up to the half mil that the EMS is requesting from all of the municipalities that they serve. So if it's possible to do a .05 mil increase to get us up to .35, that would kind of inch us in that, in the right direction. Because Belfont does have the highest usage and demand on those services of all the municipalities that this company serves.
Okay. The next one is liquid fuels. And just as a reminder, this fund, we get money from the state, we get an allocation. We mainly use it for the purchase of salt and anti-skid and for paving. It is highly regulated. We get audited on this by the state every year. We can use up to 20% of the allocation for major equipment. And if we don't use it all this year, we can, we can roll that number forward. So we can use it for larger purchases if we choose to. So this is always, in my opinion, one of the hardest funds because I don't have a crystal ball telling us how much snow we're going to get next year. So we always kind of budget high for the snow and ice removal. And then if we have a mild winter, we can switch gears a little bit and do some other things. So we budgeted for a pickup truck that is still in order. We have not yet received it this year. So that's still in the works. And Matt, we've been doing some storm drains. They've been doing so many a year, so he had some storm drains in there. Of course, we always do a paving project. And he, for next year, would like to replace the tractor and attachments that he uses, that the Public Works uses for snow removal and street cleaning. So that's in there. So like I said, this one is highly regulated. We are definitely restricted on what we can use it for.
Lori, since you, the storm drains, the storm drains that are on state roads, isn't the state now responsible for storm water management on state roads?
That hasn't changed, to my knowledge.
I thought that was the idea, that they start being responsible for storm water on their roadways.
We, 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 the Borough Association's put in for that, but I don't think any legislation has gone through yet.
We can talk about that this weekend.
Okay.
Any other questions? So this one, we get an allocation from the state. There's no taxes involved in this. All right. Well, my final one for tonight is parks. Again, we have the two, our Tallyran and Governor's Park. And we have a crew that takes care of that, so that, that all goes through here. We do levy a tax for this, and so next year, we budgeted for a truck for this year, but they moved some vehicles around, and Matt was having a really hard time finding a truck. So they moved some stuff around, and it seems like that worked out well. So I think they are not planning on getting a truck. They're going to use the one that they, they got. And for next year, he has the walkway that runs along the wall at Tallyran needs to be redone for safety. Some lighting for the pedestrian bridge that runs along the railroad bridge. And then we just usually get, if any grills need replaced. And we always do some tree maintenance that we can't do within-house. There's a lot of trees out in Governor's Park that they just need branches taken down and stuff for safety reasons. So there's, there's no increase in this. It's, it's holding its own this year.
There was a pretty substantial donation this year. Was that used for anything in particular or?
Yes. So we had a grant for the ball field, and that came in specifically to be used to upgrade the restroom.
Okay, thank you.
So that's going to, that should be done this year. I think they said by the end of November.
Yes, they're, they're supposed to start any, with any day now, really.
Yeah. So we have some grant funds left. You'll see that in special projects. And then they made a donation so that we could upgrade the restroom as well.
I believe last year, the waterfront was closed on a couple of occasions because it was icy. And I think, is this where that comes into play? We talked how it wasn't budgeted to have people work to de-ice the, the park. Is that something that we need to look at?
We can. We did talk about that a little bit. If we wanted to have some winter maintenance, that's not in here, but we can certainly talk about that. I'm sure they would welcome having somebody to do that because I know our guys get stretched pretty thin. So.
I just know it's, it's very highly used 12 months a year. And I know some people had expressed their displeasure with it being not taken care of when it was icy and things, but, you know, it's understood that we didn't have the manpower to do that. And I believe at our, our conversation, we said we'll take a look at budgeting for something like that.
I can, I can do that. Just as, so you know, it's probably going to entail a little bit of a tax increase. So I can, I can do that.
I'm just speaking for the people who walk in the park.
So I can, I can go back and put that in, yes. I can do that.
I think that is really important. Tallyran Park is just so beautiful all year round. And I know I've tried to go down there and walk when it was snowy or icy, and you, you just can't. And I think that would be a very nice addition.
And I, I think one other thing is, if you go down there, if you saw it last year when it was icy and when the, it was closed, there were people just walking through it so they could walk. So that's, that's opening up an issue. Yes, it's closed, but I'm afraid somebody would get hurt on the ice in the park. So.
Okay. Not a problem. So that was short and sweet for our start. Does anybody have any overall questions?
How's this going to work if we have, if we have people out there in the park drilling, and you want to keep ice off the sidewalks? You know, how's that going to work for people? As far as what, you know, where, where things are going to be stationed? You know, you get a lot of equipment in there with drills and everything like that, so.
In the part, the first part is just doing the studies. Once we get down the road, we know something definitely is going to happen. You know, we'll, we'll have, we'll get our information out to everybody. I don't know how much is going to be blocked off or how long. I don't have any of those details. I, I understand the first.
That's why I'm wondering why are we worried about it? If there's going to be distractions down there and gets people out of, you know, from where they're able to walk to and from, it may be, make it worse in some cases.
It's possible. We were not advised of any major disruptions, just like this first round of testing. So I'm not anticipating any of that.
Any other questions for Lori? Do you have anything to add?
Nope. I think I spoke what I needed to.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will reconvene at 7:30.
Bellfont Borough Council Business Meeting to order please for October 7, 2024. First thing we'd like to do is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the Constitution of the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, and justiciable.
Mr. Stewart, roll call please.
Mr. Benir.
Present.
Mr. Brackville.
Here.
Ms. Cleaton.
Here.
Ms. Dan.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Ms. McKean.
Here.
Ms. Burnell.
Here.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Here.
Ms. Toshney Vasey is excused. Mr. Larson.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. The next item is additions to the council meeting agenda. Council members, do I have any?
Mr. President, I do. I sent you an email early Friday morning requesting two executive council meetings regarding both budget and personnel. I did not receive any kind of response from you, so I would like this added to new business to discuss with the council, see if they are interested in discussing these items. The personnel is a large part of our budget, and it's very important that we're spending the taxpayers' money very wisely.
Well, if we read the rest of that, it says if it's a matter of agency business or it's a real emergency. The reason I didn't respond because I need to prepare a response. You're talking about management of the Bellfont Borough offices, and that's Mr. Stewart.
It most definitely is, so this would come under the Personnel Committee. And since we changed the way we did things when Mr. Brackville was president, because there were so many of us that were new on council, we all served on all those committees. This is part of the Personnel Committee, and since we do not have individual committees, this would be for the entire council. Some of this should be discussed in these meetings, some of it possibly could not, but I would like council to have those options.
Well, the rest of council isn't... Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
I believe all of that stuff is public information. All job descriptions and salaries are open to the public to...
Yes, yes, they are.
So anybody that has a question in the borough, any resident or any council member can freely look at that at any time.
Yes, so some of it could be done as discussion during council, but some of it, as we discuss certain personnel issues, maybe should be... Cannot be talked about in the public meeting. It's up to council. If you don't want to talk about it, I will just put it out there that it does need to be talked about. That was one of my meetings that I requested. The other one was a possible different way of doing evaluations for a police chief and our borough manager. We did not do that last year. It was really an ineffective and really kind of outdated way of doing the evaluations, and that is a very important part of council also. I'll let council decide. I did want to bring that to your attention.
Okay, thank you, poor Dan. I'm not... I'm really not sure that that's... We can certainly add it to a work session. Wouldn't that be appropriate? The next meeting, we could discuss it and let everyone know what you're saying.
That would be fine. If that's how you want to do it, let's... Yes, I would like...
Well, I don't necessarily know that I want to do it. That's why I didn't respond to your email, because I'm not sure that the things that you mentioned is something that the Borough Council should be doing.
I've done a lot of research on it.
I'm sure you have.
I've done a lot of research on it.
Probably not agree to disagree, but we don't manage necessarily these people. Mr. Stewart does, and if he has an issue, he can bring it to our attention, and then we can...
Right, and if we have an issue, we can bring it to him, too.
All right, let's add it to the work session.
Thank you.
Maybe next meeting, whatever. Anything else, council members? Okay, next item. Public comment. This public comment period is for oral comments regarding actions on the agenda. Anybody?
I took a look at the list. I think Deb Berger's the one that signed up.
Hi, Deb.
I really don't know if you need me to actually speak on... I'm just here to answer questions because I did put before you the estimate from GSS for the software for data processing. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention that if you have any questions when that comes up.
Thank you for being here. Any other oral comment? Okay. Next is communications written. CNET on behalf of the Spring Creek Watershed Commission requesting sponsorship coverage of the two meetings in 2025. I need a motion and a second for Bellfont Borough to sponsor two Spring Creek Watershed Commission meetings in 2025.
So moved.
Second, Brockville. Thank you.
You have to bear with me, I'm writing this down. I'm muted at this. So, okay, Mr. Benir.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Cleaton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Burnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Ms. Toshney Vasey is excused, and that's... It passes. Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you. Next item is the Center County Hazard Mitigation Plan update. Workshops for the local officials, stakeholders, and open house for the public community on October 15 and the 16th. Again, that's the Center County Hazard Mitigation Plan update. That's going to be held on October 15 and 16. No council action needed. Any comments on that? Okay. Next is the Center County MPO Active Transportation Plan Open House from 3:00 to 4:30 p.m. and 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. on October 9th, COG Building, Gateway Drive, State College. Again, that's the Center County MPO Active Transportation Plan Open House being held on October 9th from 3:00 to 4:30 p.m. and 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. Any additional comments on that? Okay. Next is Bellfont Emergency Medical Services. Formal request for funding of one-half mil on the 2025 budget. Council will consider this request as part of their work on the 2025 budget at a later So that was communications that was sent in. Nothing else to be said on that.
That's correct.
Okay. Next is the Spring Creek Watershed Commission request for the 2025 membership dues of $915.75. Council will consider this request as part of their work on the 2025 budget at a later date. Next communication is an article on Tamakua revitalization forwarded to the Bellfont Borough. No action is requested. Any other comment on that, Ralph?
Yeah, just take a look at it if you get a chance. Good article.
Next item is the Consent Agenda. I call for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Brockville.
I'll second it, Cleaton.
Thank you.
Mr. Benir.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Cleaton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Burnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Unanimous, thank you.
Next item is reports. The first one we have is the mayor with a special presentation.
Thank you. I believe Chief Whitmer is going to introduce Mr. Bowman.
Yes, good evening. I'm here to present to you our newest member of our police department, but first, I'd like to tell you a little bit about him. Can't all keep this short. First of all, Mr. Bowman comes from Altoona Police Department. He once grew up in our community. He attended the Bellfont Elementary School until he then moved up to State College where he attended and graduated from State High. He then furthered his education at the Pennsylvania State University where he received his Associate's Degree in Criminal Justice. Sorry about that. He then went on to further his law enforcement education, went to IUP, which is Indiana University of Pennsylvania, where he gained his Act 120 MOPAC certification, become a police officer. In January of 2019, he was hired for the city of Altoona where he became a patrolman. Over the last five years, he's gained vast knowledge and experience in police work over his last five years for the city of Altoona, not to mention that he is a field training officer for their department. We're excited to have him join us. I believe he's going to be a great asset to our department, and I'd like to bring him up here, to bring him in front of Mayor Johnson to present the oath.
Please raise your right hand and respond if I will. I, Noah Bowman, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the laws and ordinances of the borough of Bellfont, and obey all the laws and regulations pertaining to and governing the borough of Bellfont, and that as patrol officer of the Bellfont Borough Police Department, I will well and faithfully discharge and perform all the duties of my office according to the best of my knowledge and ability.
I will. Thanks, sir. Thank you very much. Now, I'd like to present you with your badge. Thank you, Chief. Council, this is Officer Noah Bowman. Thank you.
Chief, could I picture the mayor and the officer maybe?
Only the...
Okay. I didn't know if you missed any or not.
Yeah, I didn't miss that.
Okay, great. Thanks, Chief. Thanks, Mayor. Next is our junior council member, Mr. Larson's report that was submitted.
All right, so my report has a lot to do with homecoming because that's our biggest thing that we did this month. But in addition to that, I mentioned that our student-run store, which we called the Raider Corner, has been successfully training and preparing 35 students to work it. It's just a great way for us to get retail experience while still being in school, so we work during like our extra time in study halls or business classes. In addition, like I said, Homecoming Week was a success, so we won our homecoming football game on Friday. The dance was very dance-like. There was a lot of dancing, there was a lot of students, there was a lot of attendance, so it was very fun. In addition, on Thursday last week, we had Day of Carrying, and over half the school participated. So if you don't know, Day of Carrying is where juniors and seniors go out into the community and just participate in whatever the community really needs. So some of us went to state parks and cleaned them up, some of us stayed at the high school and just did different things that needed to be done, so it was very fun. In addition, our mini-thon is at 40% of our goal, so that's like a huge success because we are usually not this far in the year. Like, we're very far from where we're at, so it's very... It's very... Like, we feel very accomplished.
Right.
And so in addition to that, we've seen a lot of involvement in our clubs. So, for example, our National Honor Society has over 100 members, which is pretty high. In addition, the football team was successful in the pursuit of the Curtin Bowl Trophy by beating Bald Eagle, and other sports have been having successful seasons so far. So that's everything.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Next is the Office of Community Affairs was submitted in your packet, so you all had a chance to look at that. The next Planning Commission meeting is Monday, October 14th at 5:00 p.m. It's saying here that it may be canceled, so we'll keep you up to date on that. And then the next HARB meeting is Tuesday, October 22nd at 8:30 a.m. Chief, before I move out of reports, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No.
Okay, all right. All right, that's it for reports. Thanks again, Mr. Larson. Current and old business. First item is the Bellfont Borough Authority request for permission to have hydro-geological-related studies conducted on Talleyrand Park Expanded Area. The authority is exploring a concept of using wells to draw the spring water from the ground instead of the Big Spring Pond. If ultimately successful, the cover over the Big Spring Pond would not be needed. I need a motion and a second to approve the Bellfont Borough Authority to conduct hydro-geological-related tests on Talleyrand Park Expanded Area property.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
That was Deb, correct. Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Benir.
Yes.
Could we discuss this?
Discussion, I'm sorry. Yep.
Your... The quote in the email you sent us was approximate cost of $53,000. Is this a lump sum payment, or is it prorated based on what they find from day one?
It's going to be a series of payments from what I understand, because there's a series of tests being done. Like, there's a GIS test, there's a hydro-geological test, a geo-something-other test. That's the way our engineers explained it, but they ran the numbers internally and said the total cost would be $53,000 for all those tests.
So once the tests start, if after the first test it's a no-go, then the fees stop?
If they do run into something, there could... You know, if there's an opportunity to, you know, stop everything, we would do that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
There are some risks, but we thought... The authority thought it was worth taking the risks. First, they're going to take a screening.
There are some risks, but the authority thought it was worth taking the risks based on what the engineers have provided with us. There is not a guarantee. They made that perfectly clear. I think the first test is 3,000 to 8,000. The total is 53,000, and we had a lot of discussion of doing it or not, and most of the residents that we're exposed to are hopeful to not have a cover on the Big Spring. And during our discussion with the Banshell folks, it could be that those wells are so tight to the spring that it would have no impact on the stage. We just don't know that at this moment, so we can't give you an answer. That's... This is the first step in the process of where those wells may be located.
Right, I understand that. I'm just concerned about the $53,000 price tag, and if that's a lump sum, or whether that would stop if there is a point where the tests show it's a no-go.
Yeah.
Then the fee stops. That was my concern.
Yeah.
So thank you.
Doug, I just have a question, too. With the $53,000, is that part of the grant?
Yes.
It is part of the grant?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have.
Question? Yes. When you guys talked about this during your meetings with the authority, were there risks discussed? A possible risk, were they discussed? If they didn't show up in the...
Yes, we discussed that. The risks... It made... It was made perfectly clear by the engineer and our borough manager that this is not guaranteed to work, but because of the unattractiveness of the cover over the spring and our efforts over the last... Well, since I've been on Borough Council to uncover the spring, this is... With the grant money that we've received and the options that we've had, this is the one that would be most likely we could afford and succeed at this time. The other plans that we looked at were millions, 10 million to cover the pond with concrete I-beams. It would raise it above...
I know, I remember that discussion.
Yeah, so we were trying to find the most economical one and the one that would uncover the pond with the least impact on the park. Again, it could be that the wells are very close to where the spring is and have absolutely no impact on the Talleyrand stage location.
Okay, thanks. Other discussion or questions? Okay, the next...
Call for the vote.
Oh, with the vote, yeah. Let's vote.
Okay. Mr. Benir.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Cleaton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Burnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Next item is the Real Estate Tax Collector Software Vending Change at Center County Government. A conference call with the county representatives was held on September 25th. Based on the information given, having the borough go with the county's new vendor, GSS, may be the least confusing for our taxpayers. It is recommended to go with the county's vendor, GSS. I'm asking for a motion and a second to approve borough choosing GSS, the same software vendor used by Center County Government, and to notify the county of this decision.
So moved.
Second, Dan.
Thank you. Discussion or questions? Are tax collectors here?
I just wanted to say, I think it's a shame that we're moving from a known vendor that was doing, from what I understand, a good job for us, and I understand the reasoning to switch to the same thing, but it's a shame to move away from a local vendor in lieu of using somebody who's out of the area.
I have to agree with Rita.
Other comments or questions and discussion before we vote?
Over here.
Go ahead.
Is this the company that would send out two bills?
No, this company would send out one bill.
The one bill.
Because the county's using them. Had we picked the other company, the resident would get two bills. Really, the main reason we picked going with this company is so the resident only gets one bill.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Stewart?
Okay. Mr. Benir.
Yes.
Mr. Brackville.
Yes.
Ms. Cleaton.
Yes.
Ms. Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Burnell.
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Next is we're going to open bids for the police department's first-floor renovations. A motion and a second, please, from council to have the bids opened.
So moved, Brockville.
Cleaton and... Clayton and Brackville.
Thank you. Let me get that down here. Brackville and Clayton. Okay. Mr. Benir?
Yes.
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. I just wanna add, there's, it's one project, but three bids. There's a general contractor bid, a mechanical plumbing bid, an electrical bid, so we'll work our way through these as best we can.
So the first general contractor bid is for one hundred twenty-three thousand, eight hundred thirty-five dollars. Wait, is that? Look at how they typed it. That's, yeah, that's just them correcting that. Yeah, one twenty-three, eight thirty-five even.
We, we should, I said, I think that's the base, we'll look, we'll write down the base bids. Of course, our architect's gonna go through everything, but we'll record the base bids here.
Who supplied that bid?
That bid was mid-state construction.
Thank you.
Yep. The next bid is TMG Builders from Bellefonte. Again, this is a general contractor bid.
The second bid is for one hundred twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five even. And that is from TMG Builders.
The next one again is a general contractor bid, J.C. Orr &amp; Son.
This one is for one hundred thirty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars even. J.C. Orr, right?
Yes. This is the last general contractor bid, and it's from SF Construction.
This bid is for two hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars even.
And the next set of bids is mechanical and plumbing. This one is from K&amp;K Plumbing, Johnstown.
So this is just for the plumbing, is that right?
Yes.
One hundred and one thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars. Six forty-two.
Next bid again is also mechanical and plumbing, PPCI Allen.
This one is for eighty-two thousand, six hundred dollars even.
Another mechanical plumbing bid from Silver Tip Inc., out of Lewisburg.
From Silver Tip, this is eighty-two thousand, nine hundred even.
Okay, the next set of bids is the electrical. This one is from Stelco Incorporated out of Altoona.
Their bid is for forty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-five even.
Forty, what was that?
Forty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-five even. Stelco, Stelco.
Next one is Strauss Electric, again, the electric bid.
This one is for twenty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-three, twenty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-five, two thirty-five even, twenty-two thousand, two thirty-five. There's a lot of twos on that.
This one's TMG Builders for the electrical.
That's a lot of bids. This one is for sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-five. And that's still for electrical.
Yes. This appears to be the last bid for, altogether, but this one is for electrical. It's from Westmoreland Electrical Services.
Thank you, Ralph. That's a lot of bids.
That's right.
Okay, this one is for twenty-five thousand, four hundred dollars even. Okay. Let me just go back in the envelope.
So what we do is we turn all these over to our architect and make sure every, the bid packages are complete and all of that, and double-check our numbers and our list, and we'll have an official bid sheet issued. Thanks.
So I have to go to a vote? Nope, just to go.
We're, we're, turn it over for review. Now, if there's a, you know, if it's over budget or something, we come back to you. But, yeah, we'd like to.
Okay.
Keep moving if we can.
Yep. Next item is the Center County Liquid Fuel Grant application. This application is due October eighteenth. Projects of approximately twenty-five thousand were reviewed, including the purchase of materials for the street lighting renovation work and continuation of the stamped crosswork, crosswalk project. Council may modify this motion. I'm asking for a motion and a second to submit the application for twenty-five thousand dollars to be put towards the street lighting renovation work.
I'll make that motion. Dan?
Seconded, Clayton.
Thank you. Discussion? Questions?
Mr. Benir?
Yes.
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you. The next item, last item under current and old business, is the water service line inventory. The water service line inventory is to be received by PA DEP on or before October sixteenth. The borough will comply with this due date. The Bellefonte Borough Authority is mandated to send out letters to customers who have unknown or lead service lines. The letters must be sent within thirty days of the inventory due date. No council action is requested. Any comments on that? Anybody? Seems like we've been talking about that for a while. Go ahead there, Mr. Brackville.
So, it's due on October sixteenth, but I don't know if I got anything in the mail. What, and was there a date when the house had to be built by?
We checked our records, or we checked the county records. If the house is built after ninety-one, you, you probably do not have a lead line. But we, we do the checking, we try to verify that.
So mine was built in the sixties, so that would be?
You're, you're, you may have a lead line, so it's only after ninety-one. Of course, at that point, the state said no more lead use in plumbing, so that's why the state will allow anything after ninety-one, not, you know, as considered lead-free.
So I just have to take a picture of what's coming in through my wall?
Yes.
And send that to you guys?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks. Any other questions? All right, new business. First item is appointment of right-to-know open records officer. Don Hodorman served as the borough's right-to-know open records officer. With this, with his retirement, a new person needs to be appointed. We're asking for a motion and a second to appoint Julie Brooks as our right-to-know open records officer.
I'll make that motion, Johnson.
I'll second Brackville.
Thank you, gentlemen. Questions?
I do have a question on that, please. I would like to call for a short personnel committee meeting to discuss this appointment before we vote on this. Under the Borough Council, Chapter Twenty-three, the job of the committee, the personnel committee, is to recommend to council the creation or elimination of jobs as may be necessary to effectively staff various municipal departments of the borough as recommended by the borough manager. So he has recommended this, and I'm asking for a brief discussion on it.
I'm good with Ralph's recommendation. I guess it goes to a vote. I mean, do we need to go back and talk about it, or are we good with our borough manager's
So do we have to vote on her request, or do we just do it because she asked to do that?
I think you could do it either way, you know, if there, I could see a majority agreeing and we just let the vote go. Or if someone wants to be more formal, we can vote on it.
Do we need a motion and a second, Dan?
This motion was, the right-to-know was motion and seconded.
Okay, okay. It's up to council.
I don't see an issue in this, but I do see an issue when we look at our, the folks we have working for us and the number of people. And sometimes, I know there, in the past few years, when somebody would leave in that, that position, we'd just go to somebody else who's already working here. That concerns me a bit, because I don't wanna get, see somebody, like, put in a situation where they just, you know, are getting frustrated with it or something like that. I think that should be watched, and, but other than that, for now, I'm, I'm okay.
Any other comments? I guess we'll take it to a vote and see what council thinks. Julie Brooks as our new right-to-know open records officer as recommended by the borough manager.
Mr. Benir?
Yes.
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item is Pendot, three fifty-seven square feet of park property donation request related to the bridge replacement project over Mill Race. Man, council may consider action on this request or modify the motion. So we're, is this the, what they went over at the last meeting relative to the work?
Yes, and then I have up on the screen, I know it's behind some of you, unfortunately, but up on the screen in the red box shows the three hundred and fifty-seven square feet. So to orient yourself, the, you know, the Potter Street, South Potter Street is to the left, kind of the straight lines going north and south. So we're, you know, we're really right across from the cafe. Those heavy lines right next to the red box going across the street is where the new bridge piers or bridge boxes, I guess, their culvert boxes will go in place. So they need to squeeze everything in, or squeeze those boxes in. They're three hundred and fifty-seven feet short. And I got an email from Pendot asking if the borough would donate that to, I guess, the Pendot, that'd go into the right-of-way.
Right to complete the project.
Yes. Now, once, I mean, they, they're known for paying for right-of-ways. They, they, you know, get an, get an estimate and those kinds of things, that happens all the time, but for this time, maybe because we're a municipality, I got an email asking if we would donate that property.
So Ralph, adding that addition to the concrete precast, is that going to eliminate that curb that originally, when, when they presented the plan, that, that step down from the brick sidewalk at the train station was going to be eliminated? Any idea if this is going to also eliminate, will they be able to make the grade? I know it's tight underground, but I would ask the question, if they can possibly avoid that step, I would like, like that to be done.
I can put that in as a stipulation, because I, I think that's what they're trying, maybe trying to do. They're trying to squeeze, squeeze in a ramp or something, but I've not heard any talk that they wanna take out that ramp or do away with that, that lip or that curb.
Didn't somebody ask about that at the last meeting? And they said, yeah, I thought they?
I did, and they said it was eliminated. They were creating a grade instead of the step, and I was hoping that this, adding this piece of precast for the bridge wouldn't put that curbing or that step back into it. But it's not clear on that drawing, to me anyhow, whether, what the grade is.
Any other comments on this? So Pendot's requesting three hundred and fifty-seven square feet of park property be donated in order for them to complete this bridge replacement project over the Mill Street area that they talked about. That's what's before us. We can consider action on this request, or we can modify this. You're gonna put a stipulation back to them relative to the step or the comments that Mr. Johnson made?
Yes.
Does anybody have any other concerns that they would like added, maybe to a response from the borough manager?
I, I don't wanna delay the project anymore. I just, if Ralph would make a note of it and maybe contact them, hopefully it, it won't be there.
Reasonable.
Well, we can live with it.
All right, there's no further comment?
We need a motion.
What, a motion?
We're gonna do the motion?
A motion and a second. So moved, Brackville.
Second, Dan.
Thank you.
Okay, do you want to double-check on questions?
Yep, Benny, before we vote. All right, Mr. Stewart.
Mr. Benir?
Yes.
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, Bellefonte Borough contributing to an air service incentive fund to help attract airlines to the State College Regional Airport. A contribution was pledged in the past by Bellefonte Borough. Regional stakeholders are interested in creating a standing fund for this purpose. Council may take action to add this topic to a future work session. So what do you think on that? This is something we've done in the past, so.
Ask Mr. Johnson. Do you wanna comment from me? Mr. Stewart and I both serve on the Airport Authority, and it's awfully difficult to, to attract airline service, air service, commercial air service to the airport.
to attract airline service, air service, commercial air service to the airport. All airlines that we're familiar with look for an incentive to bring their service to the airport. We participated in this about a year ago with American Airlines. We were hoping to get non-stop flights from State College to Charlotte, but American turned us down, even though we thought we had the data to support the flights, employments that, that would justify us having the service. It's, it, you never know what the airlines are thinking. Anyhow, we have a chance to attract another low-cost airline to the airport, but unfortunately, they like incentives like any other airline, so we're hoping that, we're, we're contacting all boroughs and townships within the center region, hoping that, and the county, that Penn State has already committed, as I remember, some money. I guess I can say the number they're looking for is that...
What would you be asking of council? I mean, what, why would we put it on...
Well, okay, well, we're asking for, for any sort of support. Last, was it $2,500 we gave? I, I don't recall what it was.
Somewhere around there. I don't remember the number.
So, we're, we're asking just the council consider supporting this endeavor or incentive to attract air service to State College Regional Airport.
Doug, which, which budget would that come out of?
A bigger budget.
Which budget would that come out of?
Um, I don't know.
I think the last time we used a bulk water fund, because it was, it's not earmarked for anything.
I, I don't recall that.
I'm pretty sure that's what it was.
Rory would know the answer to that question.
And you, I didn't hear you. This airline is looking for how much, did you say?
A million.
A million, yes.
That's, that's not unusual.
Thank you. Well, I, I, we can put it on the work session if we don't have anything else going on, but we'll, we'll talk about it maybe at a later date, huh? All right, any other comments on that topic?
I just have one more question for Doug. Is there a deadline on that?
Not that I recall. We're, we're just, we're just looking for a, sort of a consensus that you would be willing to participate. Go ahead, Ralph.
Well, there was like a hurry-up motion, because they were trying to get one airline, and then they found out that, you know, they didn't have near enough money. So, the idea is, instead of this rush to get money, you know, have a pot or have a standing fund.
Okay.
So, that's what the, the change in thinking is about.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right. The final item on our agenda is public comment regarding issues not on the agenda. Anybody have any public comment? All right, I'd like to call for an adjournment. Motion and a second to adjourn?
So moved, Brackville.
Adjourned. Johnson, you and that microphone.